I call this regularly scheduled Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I want to welcome each and every one of you. Just a reminder, if you would silence, turn off your phone, or put them on vibrate, whatever we have. Again, I welcome each and every one of you here to our regularly meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Here.
Chairman Liner?
Here. If you'd please stand for the pledge or remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, today we want to say thank you. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be a part of something bigger than ourselves. Thank you, God, for trusting us with this awesome responsibility of continuing the proud traditions of this great nation and this great county. We thank you, Lord, for the heritage of sacrifice that has been passed down by those who have come before us. Father, as we endeavor to continue in that noble heritage, we ask you for your wisdom and your guidance. We ask you to grant unity to your people and oneness of purpose. We ask that your presence reside among all of the men and women here today who rise to the tasks of both leadership and service. We reverently ask that the results of our work bring peace, prosperity, and safety to all who were entrusted in our care. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, receive a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jack, you want me to open it up for public hearing? You want to brief first or go into public hearing?
Let's brief first and do public hearing.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening. CARTS and Craven County Economic Development have been partnering to identify possible solutions to employment related to unmet needs in Craven County. We have secured 10,000 from the C-1A and are looking to secure more. We are asking that the vote from this public hearing be delayed until the July 15th meeting to give us time to work on securing more. If we do not secure more by that time, then we would reduce the scope of the grant.
I make a motion to table.
So, second.
But we...
What was the motion?
The table. We can't table. We still got to have the public hearing.
I would have the public hearing.
Right. Just the vote is all I'm asking to delay.
Yes. But we still have to go in there.
Yes.
I receive a motion to go into public hearing?
Yes.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in public hearing. Is there any...
We have no one who has signed up for public hearings, so...
All for it up. Is there anybody that did not sign up that would like to speak on public hearing in regards to the grant application for CARTS? Hearing none. Receive a motion to go out of close?
Motion to go out of close.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of closed session. Okay, on this time, we don't need a motion. We don't, we won't make any action at all. We'll just table, we'll just bring it back on the 15th. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do not see Ms. Andrea Nix. Is that correct?
Can we just postpone that till they get here?
Sure.
I know they said that...
We still have one.
No, no, that's the last one. That's the last one. All right, let's go into, we'll hold on that one. Petitions of citizens dealing with the agenda.
Okay, Ray Griffin.
No, no, that's not that. No, this one here.
No, no one.
This one here. This is the one we want. He's got the last one. General.
There's no one, though.
Okay, there's no one. Again, anybody have any comments, discussions on the agenda items? Hearing none. Petitions of citizens is gone. All right, entertain a motion for consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda is Department Matters, Planning, Contract Awards, Community Development Block Grant, Neighborhood Revitalization Project. Chip Bartlett.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Chip Bartlett with Holland Consulting Planners, and I am the program administrator for the county's CDBGNR Neighborhood Revitalization Project. So we've kind of done CDBG programs in quite a few years when they were all related to infrastructure, but HUD and the state of North Carolina have started implementing housing again in their CDBG programs. And the CDBG program that was awarded an amount of $750,000 to Craven County is a result or related to Hurricane Matthew. So this is going back to Matthew monies. In June of 2019, we solicited proposals from a number of firms to provide the required surveying, lead, and asbestos appraisal and legal services required to implement the program. In cases where more than one proposal was received, we rated them in order to provide a recommendation tonight for a contract award. For any services where we only received one proposal or none, we will send out a second RFP. So the first service required to implement one of these programs, a housing program, is the asbestos inspection. We received proposals from three firms, Froling and Robertson from Raleigh, Enviro Assessments East in Dover, and Summit Engineering Lab and Testing of Fort Mill, South Carolina. All three firms are certified and well-qualified to perform asbestos testing. Enviro Assessments East has provided the most cost-effective rates at $300 per unit with a $16 per sample fee compared to Froling and Robertson at $1,235 per unit and Summit at $450 per unit. Enviro Assessment East also provided the fastest startup and turnaround times with a one-day start from notice to proceed with results within five business days. Based on these factors, we recommend Enviro Assessments East, Inc. for asbestos inspection services under the CDBGNR. The next service would be lead-based paint inspection, which is required when we're treating a home that was built before 1978. The two firms that submitted proposals to test for lead-based paint are Froling and Robertson of Raleigh and Summit Engineering Lab and Tech of Fort Mill, South Carolina. Again, both firms are certified and well-qualified to perform lead testing in North Carolina. Froling and Robertson, however, provided a per-unit testing of $1,340 with a $10 per sample fee as specifically requested in our RFP. Summit only provided a lump sum of $4,500 based on doing all eight homes during the same timeframe. No further testing or sample fee prices were provided as required in the proposal. Froling and Robertson is also a minority-owned hub-certified business. Based on these factors, we are recommending asbestos inspection services to Froling and Robertson, Inc. of Raleigh. And finally, legal services, which are required under these programs in regards to title searches, real estate closings if there's any acquisition, and miscellaneous legal services. We received proposals from two local firms, Richardson and Richardson of New Bern and Summerl Sugg Attorneys at Law of New Bern. Both firms have the qualifications and knowledge to provide title opinions, real estate services, and general legal advice. However, Summerl Sugg has the most experience with actual CDBG-related title searches and acquisitions. Although their turnaround time of two weeks per title opinions is a bit more than the seven days by Richardson and Richardson, Summerl Sugg's overall fee structure is the most cost-effective. Based on these factors, we recommend Summerl Sugg Attorneys at Law for legal services under the CDBGNR program. The action requested tonight is a motion to approve and allow the county manager to execute the standard CDBGNR services contracts with the recommended firms.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Jack, before we go on this, you want this all under one motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any comments? Any questions? I do. Why the great disparity between 300 per unit to the 1,235 unit? I mean, that's...
Are you talking, we're talking about asbestos?
Yeah, asbestos.
Um, I, I don't, I mean, generally, we, asbestos is, it's a, it's a mixed bag from these out-of-state or in-state firms. Enviro Assessments East, out of Dover, has done these programs. You see several of the CDBG programs I've encountered, and I don't see any difference between what they're doing and the other firms are doing. So basically, they're providing the same deliverables. They're going out, testing. If we are demoing a house, that's when the asbestos testing comes into play. So they go out and take, it's a random number of samples. Usually, it's 10 to 15. They get the results back. They're using the same labs normally as some of these other firms. So I really can't answer the question, other than travel is plugged in a lot of times with some of the out-of-town firms.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any others, discussions?
Ms. Chairman, if I just may ask, for yourself and staff, is, are there any other funds that have come from Matthew that we're waiting on, or is this the only thing that we've received as of date, December 15th?
You've got, you, the counties also receive word of DR monies, which are CDBG DR, HUD funds, that right now, the state has set up a new office called INCOR, and they are basically running the program for the state of North Carolina, for all counties. So they're in charge of intake as well as the implementation at this point of the program. I think, Don, if I'm not mistaken, was your amount for your, was that a, for the DR?
I think it's 700.
Another 750,000. So that's the, the two programs that I'm aware of.
I'll just state for the record, again, I said it last time, and I'll say it again. It's, it's ridiculous that folks that suffer from Matthew are still waiting for funds. And now, don't get me wrong, folks that are suffering from Hurricane Florence definitely deserve that money, but they've been able to get that money out, and still you've got citizens that have not recovered from Matthew. And Vice Chairman and myself have a right many resident citizens that we represent that are still waiting, and it's just, it's frustrating and disheartening to see. But I'm glad we got this little bit, but just want to wear the rest of it, so.
Great.
Governor's got it.
Chair, I have, Don. Don, will you step up here? Mr. Jones brought up a good point. How much money do we still have waiting on the governor for Matthew? This is 1.5 million, these two grants.
Right.
How much, how many, how many other programs do we have up there waiting for them to come down to us for Matthew?
For Matthew, none.
So these are the only two that we've applied for and put in for?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I think it's the only money that was available for us to apply for.
Right, right, right. Now, at one time, we had, I thought we had a million dollars coming in for the DR.
I wasn't going to correct, Don, but I think one of them's...
One of them's a million, and the other one's 750,000.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll correct you.
They're no problem.
All right, Don, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Right.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any others, discussion?
Don.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, Havelock Bypass, North Carolina Department of Transportation, Gene Hodges.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So in your packet, you saw a packet of information we received from the state. As all of you are aware, with the Havelock Bypass, we are having to move our Hickman Hill site. We're going to relocate it. They've already purchased a piece of property. We are, we've worked through some negotiations with them about the relocation, and lo and behold, they've reached out to us and said that they needed by an easement on our, on our new site. So what you see is several documents that we have to have executed by our chairman, and the state wants to see in the minutes where this gets approved. So you've got here just the typical standard W-9 form. You've got the agreement for entry, allowing them agreement through, entry onto the utility easement. You've got the document about the permanent utility easement that has to be executed. Then you see an email which states that, which clarifies why all the documents you see say $7,700, but the actual negotiated amount was $9,000. They indicate that they can't change the, the documents, but that the email will serve as proof that the amount is $9,000 that we expect to receive. Also attached, into your attachment, you'll see the actual offer sheet that indicated the 7,700. For reference, I put a GIS map of the property, and this will be the property where we will be relocating. Our intent is to call it the Croatan Convenience Site, since it's not going to be adjacent to the Hickman Hills neighborhood, but the Croatan Convenience Site. And then there's also a map that shows the amount of the easement that is shaded in blue that they are acquiring from us. So what we are asking for now is a vote to authorize the chairman to sign these documents for this permanent utility easement for the state of North Carolina.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. I hope you all realize what you've done. You know, that electronic signing is a killer. It took us, what, what did it take us last week? Three and a half hours to get, get electronic signing done? Okay, next on the agenda, appointments. Let's go through these. Pending Adult Care Home, Nursing Home Advisory, New Bern Planning and Zoning, must be in New Bern ETJ, Trillium Health Services Board. And seriously, if anybody has anything for the Trillium, please let me know. We need to get someone on there to stand with me in that board. Craven County Planning Board and Craven Community College Board of Trustees, one vacancy, seven applications. Okay, current Craven County ABC Board, District One, Chip Cognan, Tony Lee, Barb Whitman, expire 30 June. They've expired. Mr. Cognan, Mr. Ms. Whitman wish to be reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Chip Cognan.
Okay, got a nomination for Chip Cognan to be reappointed. I have a nomination to replace Ms. Whitman with Ms. Cook from Havelock.
With it, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it is the appropriate time, but given the importance of the ABC Board in commerce in this community, I would like for the board to consider appointing Commissioner Booker to the board.
Okay. Got a recommendation for Commissioner Booker to be appointed. Any other nominations? Any discussions? Hearing none. By acclamation, they're reappointed.
So, may I clarify?
Say, ma'am.
You had Mr. Shackman, you're going to reappoint.
He's going to be reappointed.
You're going to replace Mrs. Whitman with the...
Cat Cook.
Okay, and then appoint Commissioner Booker.
For Tony Lee's position. Okay, Craven, let's go through. I missed so many last time. I don't want to miss any this time. Craven County Recreation Advisory Council, two vacancies, three applications. Pat Whitaker, District Six. Jeffrey O'Neal, District One. David Diggs, District Five.
Mr. Chairman, the gentleman that was holding this seat is from District Two, but we have another, a party that sits from District Two, so I will, I think it's probably your district now that does not have the representative.
Is Paul Whitaker another one? Because he's not the one I was looking to replace.
Mr. Chairman, Paul. Back in your attachments, there's a spreadsheet, and it shows you, and we talked about this a little bit. We wanted to talk about how the seats were broken down. Dan and Billy Wilkins put this together for Parks and Rec. I'm trying to see if there's an identifying, I don't believe there is, but it's, it's right after the applications for Parks, it's the beginning of the Parks and Rec Advisory section in your attachments. It's got some blue highlighting on it.
Is that a spreadsheet? Yeah, got that.
Just kind of going over, you know, which ones are vacant would be the, as Commissioner Jones said, the District Two representative, which was Buddy Jennings. And then you have a vacancy, Mr. Chair, that you referenced from District Six, that has gone unfilled, I believe, for a couple of months. So that's your two current seats that are open now.
Okay, we got District Six that's open.
District Five.
And District Five.
I already have somebody appointed.
District Two and District Six are open now. The ones highlighted in blue are the two vacancies.
District Two. Okay, and six, you don't have anything back, but that's six. The vacancy is six.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I wish to table my vacancy until I can come up. Is there any nominations for District Two? All right, we'll table those until next meeting. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, two vacancy, one application. Carly Wooler, recommended by Jennifer Dacey.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that Ms. Wooler be appointed.
Any others? Any discussion? By acclamation, she's appointed. But we got two vacancies. We still need another one. Is that not correct?
Correct, but it's a student, and Ms. Dacey is working with the college, with early grad, early college students, trying to find somebody.
Got you.
Because it has to fit that description.
Riverbend Board of Adjustment, term expired 30 June. Frederick Rick Fisher wishes to be reappointed.
I would nominate Mr. Fisher.
Nomination for Mr. Fisher. Any others? By acclamation, reappointed. Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, term expired 30 June. Robert Boyd, District Four, wishes to be reappointed.
I would reappoint Boyd.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other nominations? By acclamation, he's reappointed. Okay, next is designation of voting delegate to the NCAA-C-C Annual Conference. I will be attending this, as well as I think everyone on here, except for maybe one that there. I'll put myself in for the voting member, unless anybody has any objections.
That's good.
Any objections?
No.
Okay, next on the agenda, petitions of citizens, general topics.
Ray Griffin. Amen. Amen. God bless all of you. Vanceboro, Ray Griffin, Vanceboro, North Carolina. Just want to talk a minute about the Fourth of July. We've got a blessed day coming, and it's a lot more than just a day off. It's a day that of independence, a day that people lived and died, and America is in desir straits. And I appreciate you guys many years ago putting in "In God We Trust" back here. I always petitioned, wanted to put up there, but that's okay. But anyhow, "In God We Trust." If we, the people, do not accept the truth, we will never move forward. There are those who have a form of godless, but not the power thereof. I look at, I seen today's paper, and it said 50 years of LGBT community pride showcased at parades. Does that have anything to do with the Fourth of July? I sit and I watch, how many of you might have saw the Democratic Convention that was put on in Washington DC, and had Joe Biden to come on. But anyhow, the sad thing is, the whole convention, the Democrats, the question was, how are you going to perceive the LGBT community? And that's what the main thing was. And our nation has really changed. It's gone from one extreme right around to the worst extreme. But we once, used to live in the Bible Belt, but the one thing I wanted to bring out about this campaign that they brought, and we know that it's immoral, that homosexuality is wrong, and I think 99% of you agree with me, it had a slogan up there, and it had this on the, on the campaign board. It said something about poor people's campaign forum, but it said a call for moral revival. Now, how can you have moral revival when you're going against the Word of God and what the Bible says? Exactly, we cannot do it. We in America, we used to live in Vanceboro, and this area was known as the Bible Belt. 50 years ago, you would have been run out of town if you put something like that up in the city of New Bern. And I know one time, y'all even searched me for telling the truth, but it's the Fourth of July, and you said to that flag, "One nation under God." Should I keep my speech quiet? Should I not say anything, or should we speak up? Should we not tell the truth about what's going on? Can we, as Americans today, shut our eyes against the truth? We are not a nation of unity anymore. We are, they are protesting everything that comes upon, it doesn't matter what it is, equal rights, gay rights, and all kind, I mean, they're on the streets protesting. It used to be that they put it in the closet, and they kept it hidden, but today it's come out in the street. There is a just God that will fight our battles for us. There's no retirement for those who love America and love the freedoms that the people fought for and they died for. They went and fought our battles, and now they stood up for the cause of Jesus Christ, for the cross, and now they want to take the crosses down. It's a sad world we're living in. Amen?
Thank you, sir. Okay, next on the agenda, county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I have one item for the board's consideration this morning, or this evening. It's a final offer to purchase real property owned by the county, which the county acquired from a tax foreclosure. The board has previously seen this matter with the preliminary approval. The bid is for $4,500. The taxes and the costs incurred by the county were $5,292.26, and the tax value is $40,040. But as we discussed when the initial bid was presented, this is a property with, either the house is in extraordinary disrepair, perhaps it was burned down, or something like that. Again, no upset bids, so we have this before the board tonight for final approval, so we can close the deal.
Receive a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. All right, let's have the new county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. I did have one item that I've actually put in the agenda for you. This is the time every four years where we have to appoint a county tax assessor. General Statute 105294 is the controlling legislation. It is for a four-year term. I do have correspondence back on June 18th from Mr. Ronald V. Antry, our current tax assessor, that he would enjoy another appointment. He's been appointed 14 times to this point. This would be his 15th appointment, and it would be for a term of four years, beginning today.
I would make a motion that we reappointed.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had briefly, as you know, I'm getting back in the office from vacation last week, briefly looked through my mail, and I want to make the board aware, I received a very nice letter from Mr. Robert Mills, who you know is a gentleman in Stately Pines we've been working with. We've been working with on the emergency watershed protection program. As I've mentioned to some of you, we're the only county in the country that's been, figured out a way to use that money, and we've done one project, which is now finished. And Mr. Mills sent me a letter, and I won't bore you with reading it, but I think there was a sentence in here that he talked about one of our employees, Mr. Patrick Baker, who as you know, Patrick is sort of our jack-of-all-trades. He may be in the creek, looking at our creek removal, debris removal. He may be out helping a farmer with some of the projects he does there, but he's also taken on this program. And Mr. Mills described Patrick as representing our organization extremely well, and he greatly appreciated the information and support that Patrick provided him. And I just want to, I wish Patrick was here. I didn't have a chance to call him and ask him to come, but I want you to know what a great job he does for the county, and really has stepped up when we needed him. So I wanted to pass that along. Remind the Commissioners that this Thursday, July fourth, and Friday, July fifth, the county will be closed, and we'll be back open on Monday. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for our manager?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many times has Ronnie been appointed?
Fourteen times.
Obviously, they weren't all for four years.
Yes, sir.
Couldn't have been.
How many times, how many years is that?
That would be sixty years.
No, no, so some of them must have been for a-
Two years.
Two-year term. Yep, I'm sorry. He has been here almost sixty years. He's actually been here since nineteen seventy-four.
He might have lied on his application.
Maybe, I'm sure, it could have been. General Statute could have changed over time, but it is for four-year terms now.
How many years does he have?
He started in nineteen seventy-four with the county. Six years before I was born.
He's only getting ninety-nine percent of the taxes back. He's got to get two-hundred.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, I was out there Thursday with Mr. Mills. Walked his property with him. And that gentleman is enthused and completely appreciative of what the federal government has done and what we have done to move this project forward. I mean, this gentleman had his house go into the river. He lost everything up to his back door.
Yep.
And it's all put back out there. It's all seated, held back there. He says they went more than a hundred and ten percent, and he's thrilled to death.
Yep.
And happy with it, so.
Came in under budget, surprisingly, right?
And that's good.
Yep.
They did a good job when I was out there. They did a good job. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioners' report. Commissioner McCabe.
Yes, I just have one thing that this weekend, Saturday, I did have the opportunity to go to the Bridston Blueberry Festival, which I had a good time there. It was hot as hell. Let me tell you, drank a lot of water, no beer. And it was nice, and I drank a lot of water anyway. And I did get a chance to visit different tents, and I made a visit. My friend here, at his booth, we had a good time, and I bought a few souvenirs and all of that. And I met some of the, all the ladies on Channel 12 news over there, and I wish I'd have gotten a hug from every one of them. And after that, it was over, so I left and went home, and that was it. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sampson?
Well, like I said, I was able to attend a meeting on Monday night last week at the Omega Center. Some people coming down, trying to help, help the people get some of the homes and some of the community and areas straightened out, so people can move back in their homes. And we had a good crowd there, but one of the most important subjects was concerning the homes and the Standard White Cellar. We know the city has intention of moving the Standard White Cellar out of the community. And if they move the convention center or recreational center out of the community, then we have all those young peoples over there nowhere to go. We do have a small one down on South Street, but it might hold fifty-seven-five people, and they'd be crowded then. So we have a lot of people that's coming to the rescue of Standard White Cellar. It's been in that same location, but I know it at least forty years. And the people seem to still want it there. The city has been saying that the flood was too great, so I tell them right quick, I say, "There was no worse than the convention center, the convention center right in the river. We're going to replace there." You tell me you can't replace Standard White Cellar. We've been having a little function. We had the Dove Fest out there this weekend, had a good crowd out there, had a nice time out there. So we're still working on this issue, and we're hoping that we get a lot of support, that we can help save that place out there, because we don't have any more room in the jail. Look like I wouldn't be sure if keeping that pool, so we need to build a jail or let the Standard White Cellar stay there. And I'm really convinced that if we do move it, and say we have these kids going across town, two or three miles, most of them don't have any transportation, a lot of young kids, and they don't have nowhere to set up the different function that they could have for kids, it's going to be a bad time. You're talking about spending money. We might not spend it on the jail, but we should spend it in courts. So we're just praying and asking for more help, everybody who loves children, that they will come to our rescue and try to help, that we can save this community cell. And this one, one of the finest community cells that's in the community, and the largest. We had programs come from the other community centers into that community cell. Now, all we have is the community cell way across town that they could go to. And you had said that they were thinking about George Street first, but I knew there's no room out there on George, over there by George Street, where the senior citizen placed it, and also the kitchen out there that serves the people who don't have nowhere to eat during the day, and have rooms for people that don't have nowhere to go, and the rooms are closed. We only have a few of them out there. We even have veterans out there to the soup kitchen. They got places for the veterans. I think that's an outstanding place out there. And that's having, if we were going to build some, we should build a nice place out there for people who don't have anywhere to go. People don't have anywhere to go, it's easy to say, "Well, we'll build a place out there in the country for them." But if people out there in the country don't have nowhere to get, where you get back to town, what's it going to do? They don't have no transportation, and right now, we're talking about getting more transportation in our community. And this, we have a small cart van that's running in the communities and in the rural area, and that can't handle any load, so we really need to think about these issues. And all of us are supposed to be concerned about each other, so I'm just hoping that we get some more help to try to help save that community cell. People is coming up and supporting it, but we need even more people. Let people know that we need somewhere for the people to go, rather than put them away and let them stay gone. And also, I was just looking at the, at the gas station when I was coming by, while it was going, looked like the gas ran up, or at least twenty cents. I already did it for the weekend, but the gas don't stay that long. You need to always think about trying to work with those people, try to help, help to keep the prices low on gas, or if you got to be here for it, not even buy gas, that's bad, that's bad, not being able to travel anyway. And we do what we can in fixing the way that people get from place to place, but we still like it. We need to do everything we can to keep what we got and add some more. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Booker?
Thursday night, I had a town hall meeting at Carolina Colors, and had a good turnout. Probably had somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five to forty people, which I thought was pretty good, considering it's in the summertime. Talked about a number of subjects, but one which is, was the most passionate by the people there was the concern about the safety at the intersection of Thurman Road and US seventy. Excuse me, there have been a lot of accidents at that intersection, and the people coming from Carolina Colors, coming toward New Bern, have to pull out onto seventy and make a left turn. And it is, as one member there described it, as bumper cars, because people coming from the other way, the roads aren't aligned, et cetera. And so, we have a meeting next week, next Thursday, with the state DOT people, and hopefully we can get some resolution on how we can, you know, when this, when we approached the state at the end of the year, their comment was, "Well, we're going to be, we're going to be redoing that whole road." And that's true, but we could have some people die in the meantime. So I have no idea, I don't know anything about traffic, other than I don't like to be in it, and as far as how and what we can do to improve it, the people from Carolina Colors would be very appreciative. So we'll be looking at that next week. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I just make one comment. I know you're going to probably talk about it in depth, but I was asked, along with the chairman, to Friday to go to Raleigh and receiving the body of Corporal Stephen Nimick. That was the most humbling experience I've ever been a part of. You know, we saw folks on the way back, stopping on the side of the highway, saluting, children standing, fire trucks at every overpass from here to Raleigh. We were accompanied to Raleigh by two of our deputies, our law enforcement officers from the Craven County Sheriff's Department, and they also had the opportunity to go on the tarmac with us and seeing the body that, as it came out of the airplane. The ability today with DNA and the identification of these remains, and after sixty-nine, seventy years, being able to return one of our own back to the homeland in which they came from, is just extraordinary. And they're continuing to do that. Many of our soldiers that are servicemen and women that were there are being identified and brought back home. And so tomorrow, I know Corporal Stephen Nimick will be laid to rest at our national cemetery, but I'll stop my comments and let you continue on.
Go ahead.
But I was glad I had the opportunity to be a part of it, and I'll just say, as my last thing, on the way home, I called my little girl and my wife, and asked her and Emily to go to the overpass at Cove City, and she saw the long line of folks that were on motorcycles, the procession as it came to Craven County, and she had a lot of questions. And we saw a lot of children that were on the roadway, and so again, it was a very humbling experience for me, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been sitting here reading the Declaration of Independence, since we're coming up on the Fourth of July, and as many of you know, I am a veteran. My father is a combat wounded veteran, so this document means a lot to me. And I would recommend to our citizens that we read it on the Fourth of July, because it was a revolutionary document that said, "All men are created equal." Nobody thought the United States would work, except it has, and our, we have not always treated everyone equally. I think that is part of the nature of the innate simpleness of man, of human nature, but we continue to work for it, and we have been a flag across the world, because we publicly committed to that equality of all men. So on this Fourth of July, I would encourage everyone to read it, and see what it says, and see what it doesn't say, because we often hear things that we think are in a document, and they are not, but that is a good way to celebrate our citizenship and our country on that momentous day. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair?
Yes, as Commissioner McCabe said, that he was at the Blueberry Festival. I was there, too. I was one of the tasters of the Blueberry Festival, along with Chip Hughes, and Norman Sanderson, and Lauren from the Morning Newscast, and Donnie the Weatherman was the emcee. And I would believe that all four of us that were testing the food, we ate it all. It was pretty good. The other thing I'd like to mention is that, and you're talking about Highway seventy, unfortunately, I've attended a meeting, I guess about a month ago, and unfortunately, General Trojan has made an announcement that because of the hurricanes, repairing the roads and so forth, cost one point five eight million, billion dollars out of their funds, so that a number of projects are going to be probably held up a little bit. Now, he kind of stated that he didn't think it would affect the interchanges and James City, but there is, you know, when you're short that much money, which is about, I believe, sixteen percent of the Department of Transportation's budget, there's certainly going to be some kind of delays on a lot of these roads. So I just want to make you aware of that. But I would agree with you, that is a dangerous intersection, and anything I can do to help you in that area, being on that border, just let me know. That's it, Mr. Jim.
Sure, thank you much. Couple of things to go over. On twenty-one June, I was sat in for Commissioner Booker for the District 4H Awards here in Havelock, and what a privilege. Let me tell you, we got some bright kids. If I was that eager about myself, and that confident about myself at fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, I would, I'd be a lot further along than what I am, that's for sure. We have got something to be proud of with our kids. They were super. We had a hundred and sixty-three kids from the 4H, from the region, and that's nineteen counties in this area that came in here. Craven County took seven or eight gold first place, and a large number of silver and bronze, so they did good. I mean, if you have any opportunity, the young lady we have out there that runs our 4H program, Jason, name?
Ms. Brooke.
Ms. Brooke, Ashley Brooke, she is superb. She is superb on that, and they did great. To piggyback on Commissioner Jones, on Corporal Nimick, to be asked to go up with the family and be part of the family detail, to receive that body up there and escort it and bring it home, was such an honor and such a privilege to be with them. I mean, humbling is probably not the right word. To be there for sixty-nine years, to be buried in a communist country, and only got able to come home last year and identified this past December and brought home now, is just amazing. Sixty-nine years, he was killed in Korea in nineteen fifty. If anyone is interested, and has some time, the funeral is going to be at ten o'clock tomorrow at Cotton Funeral Home, and we'll move from there to the National Cemetery for burial at eleven o'clock. Secretary of Veterans Affairs will be here with a proclamation and a flag from the governor's office to present from that. Being a casualty officer is one thing- Being a casualty officer is one thing. To escort with the family to receive the body and part of it is just, it's life-changing, it just makes you think of what we do have to be thankful for and what this country is. We've always said, we're going to bring each and every one of them home, regardless of how long it takes. This is sixty-nine years, we brought one more home. This is not, this is probably the second one now in the last three weeks, because I think Duplin County brought one home not too long, the last couple of weeks. So it's, it's coming about, but it's an honor, and I will be there tomorrow for the funeral and for the burial at the National Cemetery to go with that. Also, I'd like to remind everybody, if you sort of get a little bit tired of New Bern and want to get out of New Bern, the Fourth of July, Hatlock has its festival and fireworks display. This year, we have the Marine Corps Band that will be putting on a concert down there. Everything starts at five o'clock, and the fireworks starts at nine, and they all go good. And on that, I'd like, wish everyone a safe holiday, return safely, be careful at that. On that, that's all of my comments. We're going to go now into closed session.
I have one.
Oh, yes, sir.
I just thought, I received a message when I was, I got out of the hospital that were, when there, when I was in an accident that, it's not, no, it's Tom's wife before the meeting, she wasn't there, but before the meeting, she, she asked a prayer for me while I was in my accident, and I wanted to give her my appreciation for the prayer, because I'm here right now, so I know the Lord is able to do anything in this.
Okay, receive a motion to go into closed session. Board will go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A5 for acquisition of real property, purchase, option, exchange. Do you see any action taken coming out of closed session?
Potentially, sir, yes.
Okay, there will be possibly action taken after coming out of closed session.
I did have one additional thing. I know you haven't said recess yet, may I ask you?
You're the manager.
Okay. You're on the meeting. And I, I saw our sheriff here, and I, I had it in my mind, and I got excited, because I, I was on vacation last week when I got to the podium, but one of the things that we've worked hard on over the years, and our new sheriff's embraced, is helping folks who are in our jail find the path forward once they get out. And I received an email last week from some folks, and they were talking about, the sheriff had had the first Keys to Freedom class inside the jail, and the first person has responded back after that class to wanting to change their life. And that's what it's all about. So I think the hard work that's gone in, I'm very thankful that our sheriff is willing to start this program and work on it, is something that, as Mr. Sampson talks about a lot, it's a lot cheaper for those folks to be out of jail than it is for them to be in jail. So any help we can give them there is a big, big thing. So just want to make sure, I didn't want that to lead past, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to go into closed session, like I say, there may be action taken after coming out of closed session.